With the trees down, you know, some of the houses, and we pray for speedy recovery and help. While we thank you as we come together and just make decisions that need to be made, and continue to move forward with these ordinances, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd also like to mention, would please keep Kevin Baird and John B. in your prayers. Kevin had a little issue. He's getting better, but of course, John, he's had an ongoing battle with cancer. I think it's no secret, but he's getting by. He's been going to work, so keep him in your prayers. All right, go ahead and get started here. Due to John being out, we still need to approve the May and June minutes. I believe the last meeting that John attended, he didn't have them printed, so we couldn't approve them. So you all should have copies of those. I'll just give you just a minute there to glance over them and make sure you don't see anything that is in error. Motion made by Mr. Hartman. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Broadman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June meeting.
I'm going to turn that over to Emily.
Motion made by Emily. Second.
I have a second.
Second by Lori. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Max Green, would you want to go ahead and come forward, sir?
Really hoping John would have been here to help clarify some of the questions I had. The first one was going to be the exempt subdivision question that we had in limbo on the one that was, the way it reads, if they were created prior to May 1st, 2011 on a property card, then they could be divided, and if not, but that's a section that had overlooked, looked in the past, and I was hoping to get John's take on that one. The second section. You had it.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the, would it may, there would have been the egg meeting that's supposed to be, that was advertised in the newspaper for one of these areas that was going to be possibly 25 feet, or Travis wanted to get really close on the property line, more so than what they had in the past. And the question coming up, whether you had anything on your ordinances, we're allowing them to go ahead and do that. In your zoning ordinance on Section 701, two days forward, it says they may be allowed a variance, but it doesn't say they shall, or that has to give them a variance.
Excuse me just a minute. Let's just, let's go through them one at a time, back up to the exempt subdivision.
Okay, the exempt subdivision, that section, uh, I apologize. After the D in the definitions. Section 3, now the bottom. Only two such exemptions, divisions of this type shall be permitted on any tract, a continuous tract of land under the same ownership and existing on May 1st, 2011. And that was a question we got into, or you all got into, as far as, could you take a parent property and make two children properties, and then turn around, take them children properties and subdivide them again, even though they weren't in existence prior to 2011? That would not allow, that wouldn't be exempt subdivision, divisions anymore. That got into where you had the examples of four or five properties for sale, like one or two acres out, and how they come into existence, which I'm saying, the way I'm reading this, and I'm hoping John will say whether they can actually become in existence or not, and what the county's position is going forward, or what, I'm assuming nothing can be done about the property that's been split the last two or three years, that may not meet the criteria.
Yeah.
That's a question, that was more of a question with, I don't have an answer, I don't expect an answer from you all without John being on the way in there, is what I assume.
I can tell you this, that's something we've kind of struggled with. Travis and I and Emily were talking about that just last week. It's kind of a mess, and I guess it's been that way for a long time. Now, I don't know what other counties do, but when it comes to this situation where, you know, you're trying to define a piece of land that's subdivided, and then, how many splits are you going to allow, and then, if it's a relative, that's all fine and dandy. We've been kind of using the honor system, and unless we go back and do the genealog- genealogical research, how are you going to know if that person is relationed, now it's a, it's a meeting family? And I know you've been getting into this, and it's still kind of up in the air.
Well, I come up, the date there, we've got to set a deadline, eventually, all these old people that had to grab in their names prior to this, will be eyed off and take care of themselves, because you can't split them without.
What section is, is that 1, is that 153?
Yeah, 153.
Yeah, 153. Okay.
On the back.
Can you provide me with that for the minutes, please, sir? 153, only.
Oh, cool.
Four?
Yeah.
Subsection, I have a hard on following this one.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's letters and numbers, I'm trying to do the right one.
No, I appreciate that. I can't.
Absolutely.
Do anything.
Since you are the surveyor and you are the plan director, and I know we touched on this before, but we never really actually resolved or determined whether what our current ordinances, well, we know what they say, but are they causing problems, and is it fair? Max, I'm kind of like you, what in the world does May 1st, 2011 have to do with anything?
Well, that was, like what Travis said, a big crowd when they first started with the zoning, and they wanted something to say, you're not going to take all the rights away, so they said, here's a compromise, here's a cutoff date, if you didn't own it before then, you can't buy it and then re-split it and everything else. And this allows grandpa to get the kids stuff, and he basically had come out of the family's name and, you know, the new property card would be made in existence, but it would be after 2011, therefore, it wouldn't have an exempt status anymore. And part of that, I think, was intended likely, Indiana land subdivisions were, well, I bought eight acres and I want to split for half of my kid and stuff. If it was on their, in their name prior to that, they could split one time, or they could split it, but then they'd be new property cards for both pieces, you couldn't keep splitting and splitting. Or that was my interpretation, whether that's, but I thought that was why, when they ripped this up, when Tom had to split it together, that was the intent for the cutoff date, to say, your grandfather didn't own it. That's like buying something else and trying to say your grandfather didn't, well, you didn't own it before then, you're not really grandfather. It's a brand new. So I would interpret that as being the grandfather cutoff date. If it wasn't on the flat book prior to that, you can't consider it to be a dig in.
The plan director is not going to stamp a subdivision exempt until he confers with the surveyor, right?
Correct.
In fact, you never stamp a subdivision exempt until you confer with the surveyor, correct?
Correct.
So, in some ways, right, wrong, or otherwise, this is a judgment called by the plan director.
I understand. That's why I was hoping John would have been here when I first wrote about that, that wasn't really the real initial of what I wanted to speak on, but that was one of those things that you rubbed on two meetings ago, and I didn't leave with a real good understanding, and I was hoping, in the meantime, John would chill up so we could all have a better understanding.
In your mind, what would you like to see changed in the current ordinance?
Well, I think the stamping, but the way it was explained last time, Emily didn't consider, it wasn't explained to her where the child properties couldn't be split because they wasn't in existence prior to this. So if somebody bought a piece, split a piece off three years ago, and then come back to split it again, she didn't know they couldn't do that. And what I'm saying is, according to this, if it wasn't on the old flat book, if you can't go back to the 2011 flat book and say, 87 acres in Bob's name, you're trying to split something that's 87 acres in Bob's name, you can't split it as an exemption division. And so you can only split it twice. I understand, in my interpretation, was you could split off for two kids at one time, but once you get a new property card, it no longer has 87 acres on it. It no longer says it was in existence prior to 2011, your exemptions are done. You've got to come in front of the board like anybody else, and say, listen, I'm wanting a subdivision that owns a one house, or whatever the purpose is, but you still have to come in front of the board to divide that ground. Because any, my interpretation, any split is a subdivision, anytime you take a flat and turn it into more than one, or property, or I don't know the terminology I'm looking for.
I would suggest, if it's all right, that here in the next few weeks, at the earliest convenience, that, and I'd be glad to sit in on this, you get with John and tell him to read through this, ask him what Max just brought up, because it is creating a problem for you. In fact, Jeff Satter told me when I first got on this board, he made me promise him that something get done about that, because it's a lot of, well, it's a lot of extra work for you, it's a lot of grief, and it's not real clear, so, and Travis, you may want to sit in on that too, you're going to be the one enforcing, so.
Just as a reminder, I do have an appointment on the very first of August, so if John can't meet with me before, then it might be in September. And then in September, I have a surgery, so it might be after that. So I want to put a time frame on it, because I have some stuff coming up, and John's, I don't want to force him to come in, but I will send him, I'll send him a share on email tomorrow.
Okay, so, I mean, I agree, it's been a problem, and it needs addressed.
I don't know without, I know that this is what I understood when it was created, that there was some point in time, and that's where the point in time for the cutoff was, and then after property cards got changed, you couldn't, you no longer had a pre-ride exemption, you had to go through the regular process.
Yeah. Thank you, and your second subject?
The second subject was the VDA hearing, which I didn't get anything more out of that, and I look back at the county ordinance and the idea that Danielle thought they may have lit a verbage in here that would already take care of, to be able to allow that, but what I'm seeing is may and shall, and then when I went back through, the Washington County Board of Zoning Appeals Procedures, which was adopted April 4th, 2016, I come up with some different points in here that need to be considered. Section 1.3, according to the, they got, the board has used, is to use, to grant uses, grant or deny variances for used districts, classifications, and zoning ordinances. That's 103, Section 3, that, their job is to actually grant the ordinance, or sort of the variance. And Thor is referring to special exemptions, that's the purview of the board by itself. If I go on down to.
I'm not sure I know what you're referring to, I'm so sorry.
Do what now?
What are you referring to, I'm sorry? What document are you referring to?
What document I'm referring to is, this is what's in here, the Washington County Board of Zoning Appeals Rules and Procedures, adopted April 4th, 2016. That's the one that I'm reading off of currently, I'm sorry, I didn't. Section 304, the general rules. Official action requires a meeting. No action is official unless authorized by a majority of the entire membership of the Washington County Board of Zoning Appeals at a properly caused meeting. So I don't think you could allow them to get a variance just because the neighbor signs off on it, without the board actually having to vote on it. 306, Section 1, a meeting, the cancellation, here's another section we got there too. Cancellation, if it is impossible to conduct a meeting at the scheduled time date and place such as due to severe weather emergencies or other unforeseen events, the chairman shall cancel the meeting and may set an alternative meeting date and place. In any case, wherever the meeting is canceled, the chairman shall immediately notify the plan director and notify all of the membership applications, the applicant, and the local newspaper, and the cancellation, in addition to posting of a notice on the location of the meeting. There was no posting on the door. We took off, I took off work early to get here. Todd had come in, and we called Rick Roberts, and he called Tom, Tom knows the deal on that one. There was no, the rule wasn't followed on the cancellation, for whatever reason.
Okay, if you want your answer, Travis can explain it.
Well, I guess the confusion is, actual applicant and application, because he was supposed to, he had the application started, and then also had the legal paid for, the legal ad, and notice for the VDA meeting, and he went to the paper during the process of him filling out that case.
Excuse me just a minute. Do you want to explain how that works? Because it's assumed that we put it in the paper when the individual who has all the information on this tract of land actually is the one that goes to the newspaper stating that he's going before the VDA to ask for a variance?
It's, it's in, I think it's what you're asking, it's in the applicant's packet.
Okay.
That's in the checkbox section right at the top, that that is his responsibility to do, to get the application filled out. So he went to do that, and then through the application, he decided he wasn't going to complete it. He was supposed to go back up and cancel the ad.
Okay.
It didn't happen, or run another newer ad, canceling that one, and the, you know, the meeting has been canceled. We didn't know it didn't happen.
Okay.
So that's what happened.
Okay, well, well, my assumption was, is that they talked, we'd heard discussions in here a little bit about, they had, the verbage were, that would be sufficient to get the neighbor to sign off, without having the board hear it, is what I was getting. And I was working under the assumption that they'd say, oh, well, that wasn't necessary, we just signed off on him anyway, and it's okay. But what, and whether it was a case or not, nevertheless, I'd say, coming back and looking at this, it said that the board is required to meet no matter what, and the board has the sole authority to grant variance, and the county variance are distances greater than the state of Indiana's, so you'd have to grant your variance down to the state level before the state could go ahead and say, well, we're okay with that, because otherwise, they just go straight to the state, they cut the county out completely, on CFOs or KFOs or anything, the county would be, even though their ordinance says two hundred feet from the property line instead of one, the state of Indiana says, it's still required to come in front of the VDA, the county's VDA, to get down to that level before you go any further. And you had concerns at the time of this, people wanting to get down way below the minimum, at even like 25 feet, and that cuts out the neighbor who fled across the road, who may not be affected by that, but it still comes in closer from the distance, which is required. That's why I brought up this issue, is because according to this, and you read through all of it, which I didn't finish the rest of, but you are required to hold a meeting if you've got to give a variance, well, Section 601, a variance on any of the standards required to meet. That final decision.
Correct, and I get all that.
Okay, well, okay, I was working under the assumption that we'd already decided the verbage in this other was sufficient to do it, but it does not say shall, it says may.
Well.
And still requires the board meeting to attend, to get that, and that's where I was looking at, because had we, the misunderstanding, just like with this other section, the May 1st of 2011 and stuff, I mean, where, where does that come in, so we go back on the same page, that this is what the ordinance says, and this is what we're doing? I mean, that's where I was, I was under the misunderstanding that it had already been settled without having to come in front of the board, because that verbage says you may, but it still requires the board vote to allow it. So that's a misunderstanding on my part, because you had concerns that they got to come in and try to jam down to nothing, and all they had to do was get a sign from the neighbor, and cut out the requirement, other neighbors' participation in the process.
Yeah.
And that's what I was looking at, that I don't believe you had verbages that said that, where you could do that down the road. I think you're still got to come and have a full board meeting.
Right, that's not, yeah, that's not going to be, yeah, I mean, the board has talked, we've talked about that before, is, you know, and I think, maybe you, Max, I don't know, that that was always helpful in the VDA process, to have that letter, from adjoining neighbor or whatever.
Correct, yeah. That made it a lot easier, but you see, I still believe they had, the public had the right to hear, you know, they may have, it's early, but they still have the right to attend a meeting, and we call it, trying to match our VDA, for even the smaller poultry houses, to be what the state standard was for notification of the neighbors and all that good stuff, which wasn't, that was part of the idea for getting the zoning, is because if it fell under that standard, you would have a notification whatsoever, and the county said, we're going to be re-ordered, the rest of the people, and that, no, of course. And that's all I had of it. I was hoping, like I said, I was hoping for John for the first section there, I wanted to make sure we wasn't construing may, a shall, in, and I understand that you don't, if you get too many hearings over the same thing, you may want to reduce your standards, but you're going to have to go ahead and have a public notice and reduce the standards according to the zoning book, you're going to have to make your changes and put them up the library and whatever, to go through the proper procedures there. And it's the same with going from two acres, two acre average to two acre only, I'm not sure that that went through the public, BM, to see it's a public hearing or not, or the, you know, public for public view in the same manner as the big document did. And it may not have to, but it still, you know, it may have been done correctly, but I didn't.
Now, what, say it again?
The, where we changed from the two acre average on the subdivision control to the two acre minimum required, we may change it to the document, but I'm not sure that we did the 10 day required, where they can view it at the library, like when the zoning stuff first went in, and, you know, different places from the public view, what changes were going to be made.
I apologize, I apologize.
I know what he's asking.
Okay.
We're not going to have a public hearing on one line.
Um, we're not going to have a public hearing on one line, one item, one little tidbit. The idea here is this is what we're, we're working for is to get all of, all the things we've passed.
I had to get it one time and get it together?
Yeah.
Thirty-six, that's seven, that's four, that six oh four requires even when you make a small change, you don't have to put the entire document up there, don't hit the alterations to the documents.
I'm not sure that's right.
Okay, well, I'll, 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 I'll get it for you though.
Okay.
So if we agree that that's a change that we want to make?
Yes.
Then we can continue to work on that and then present.
Yeah, and present all that all at one time, but I'm not, what I'm saying is I'm not sure that subdivision control change that you made if that contractor who wanted the two acre average would come back in with your two acre minimum stands if it wasn't presented at the.
That's a gray area for sure.
The people are saying, and it does say if you make changes, you don't have to put out a whole document, just the operations to that document.
Luckily in our favor, he's changed his plans and he doesn't.
Well, I understand, but, but what I'm saying is if you make the little changes on the fly, we may need to kind of compile them like every six months or, I know you're trying to get to the main goal for a mango mango, we've not got there for a long time. And I'm wanting to see that, that you make your little kicks and your little kicks that are recorded somewhere where they can be codified as like you do your other ordinance in the house.
Well, they, they will have to be a, a public hearing when, when we're all finished with.
Yeah, but there's a public hearing required when you make operations, either the small or minor sections.
Have those changes been made and are being regulated? Yes, that's.
No, they're not being regulated because they haven't been voted on by the commissioners and they're not even, not even gone to print yet.
So people aren't being held to that standard?
Well, that, that's the question, that was the question with the two acre change. Whether if he comes back in here and said, hey, I got this flat, everything else meets, I don't have two acre minimum, but I have two acre average. You have, you're required, if they make the standards on your books, at that time it comes on the paper, you're required to accept it.
It's not enforceable until it's all finished and the commissioners vote on it. So he's good. It, it will be average until it's.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting, that's what I'm playing. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat you with a stick. I'm just saying, we need to, we need to catch this stuff up. We need to bring it up to one, to speed work. When you get the notes and if you can get everything you want, every six months, we need to do just a mini thing. And it's only gonna be like five items in the trouble, we don't actually have, and, but it's qualified as being.
Yeah.
A, a not vote is what I'm saying.
Here in the next month or two, we'll be wrapping all this up because we're basically finished with, uh, well, we're running out of material. We've got temporary uses done and we've got the, what was the other one? Uh, whatever it was, anyway, I won't look down the list, but yeah, we're, uh, the goal is to get it wrapped up and here in the next month or so, get all this printed up and all these changes made, have the public hearing, have the second public hearing and get it enacted.
Yeah, but it just, all those things that we've been breaking, we think we've been catching as we go along because part of this in the subdivision control, it actually reads partly the older, uh, ordinances were, uh, handed when they, when they put it together. So whether they're still legal on the book and being looked at them that way or whether it has to be under this subdivision by itself for the last, last page.
What are the, you repeal, you repeal part of your other ordinances.
And so I don't know whether your five oh three, the ones you've been quoting, whether any of those have been repealed when you repealed, uh, the five or six sections in the back of this document to create one single document.
An old document can't be repealed until a new one's ready to go to print.
Well, this one, one did go to print. The, the subdivision control ordinance did, uh, document did go to print back in 2011 and was adopted by the county.
Yeah. And it.
And at that time, they canceled some of these previous ones.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether the ones that you have on your book that you slip into, whether any of those are still, you know what I'm saying?
You mean the master?
The master, yeah, the master book, whether any of those were actually repealed or not.
It's an ongoing process, I mean, it just.
I know it, but I, I'm, I'm just saying that you might want to look and see that you didn't repeal something you didn't intend to and you're leaning on it as a crutch for just like the, uh.
You can't repeal something unless you've got something to replace it with.
You can't, well, it was replaced with the subdivision control ordinance. It replaced like five or six different documents.
Yeah.
When it come into play, yeah. So it re- it replaced them.
In sixteen.
Well, well, yes.
Right.
That's what I had. I, I, I had concerns that, uh, uh, the waiver from the neighbor's deal was gonna override the board's right to, uh, and the public's right to have a, a board hearing and hear what was going on. And when that one came up, it was advertised in the newspaper, which was required, the state required the BZA to advertise, whether you're handing it off to them to spend the money and go through the process, it's still required, you can't hold a hearing unless it is legally, uh, within the state's boundaries. And that's what I was reading, that, that's a, a legal official notification in the newspaper of a public meeting and then nothing happened with it. Nothing else come up. It didn't get canceled, it didn't get repealed, it didn't.
It got canceled because the land didn't show up.
But, well, but it did fit, but it, it comes back, it should have been a notice or a note at the very minute.
Uh, I didn't know until we walked in here, but anyway.
Well, I, 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 the, the, the day that we and Ron had come in early and, and Rick called you.
Yeah.
And that, that's what I'm saying.
That's the day.
It, it should have been, even if it was John, that was about time John got down. And even because John got down, well, maybe John was the reason or something, but it never got close to the door outside the meeting room in according to your own standards and stuff.
It was pretty.
It was pretty close at that time in the process.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's all I got. I appreciate your time, but I.
Thank you, Max.
Well, we'll, we'll look into this, uh, this exemption subdivision thing, so.
Well, like I said, in two months, you may have taken care of any of them, but if, if for some reason you, you wouldn't, well, they need to, uh, dot your i's and cross your t's as you go.
That's the goal. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Woodhurst Farms subdivision comment?
That's me.
So you?
That's me. Um, so in the June meeting, and in the minutes, if you guys wanna look back, Brock Dawson came and he presented the dissolution of Woodhurst Farm subdivision on behalf of Justin and Lindsay Busta Farm approved. Um, they said that Angela Bush was a landowner in that subdivision. She bought one of the lots out and the family owned the rest of those lots. We approved to dissolve that subdivision. I sent that paperwork over to John after that meeting. He called me after the meeting, said, hey, we can't do that. She's not a property owner, she's buying it on contract, have another property owner. So she signed off to they, that she would not be wanting to be a subdivision, but she's not going into owner technically, we can't do that. He told me that you would get that information back to Brock and let them know. So I have not vacated it in the surveyor's office. It is still a subdivision because John said, eh, can't do it, that has not been recorded, it's not been done. And I don't know if John has reached out to them or not. I haven't heard back from John since.
So the Busta Burgers are not the property owner?
They are the property owners, but Angela Bush is not.
Angela Bush.
She's buying it on contract.
She's buying it on contract.
Is, is there another party besides the Busta Burgers and Angela?
Yeah, I don't remember who the, or who she is buying it from, like, yeah.
And that, that third party that we don't know?
Yes.
They need to sign on.
That's what John's saying.
And then everything is, is all.
I, I guess. I have, that's just what, that happened like the week after this meeting, so we'll say the week after June fifth, haven't really heard from John since, so I don't know the.
And you pass that along to Brock?
John sent you some. So I haven't heard anything back yet. He has the documents in his office or Brock has them in his office, I'm not quite sure. I just was told to give the information to John and I did. And John called me and told me that.
Will you talk to him in the next few days about your little meeting on exempt subdivisions? Would you mention that? Those people are probably wanting, some want to take action and if they can't, if you get it done, you're gonna have to go back and find out the ownership property that Angela Bush is buying on contract, right?
Mark, sorry? I just want to give you guys an update.
Okay, it just so happens on the agenda, we have subdivision exemption definition, which is what we, we're talking about with Max, that's it. Now, I know Andrew and Danielle were, I think you were both out that one particular meeting on, on conflicts. My notes show that you had a question about some issues with the exempt subdivisions. Over and above what Max had mentioned on the, uh, on the May 1st deal and, and the splits. So we don't, we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this because Emily's gonna meet with John about it, but either one of you need to, want to sit in on that meeting. I know you're, especially Danielle, I know you're state faring right now, so. But it might be something that, it might, any one of us boards welcome to sit in on that meeting as far as that goes. They can give a little, uh, insight or assistance. And maybe it's, uh, maybe it's such a thing, maybe we, uh, I can't remember back that far and I didn't write it down, maybe your questions that you had, Andrew, were, were satisfied with an explanation or something or unless you had something else about the exempt subdivisions?
I, I don't at this time.
Okay, I had in my notes that we, uh, on the May, no, I'm sorry, March, the March 13th meeting, that we had unanimously approved and I would not have written down in my notes unanimously approved had it not been a vote on the temporary uses. But I'm not sure that the minutes for the March meeting reflected the vote. Why, I don't know, but I just didn't see it in there. The only thing it says is the commission needs to discuss 518 regarding temporary uses. There was, uh, there was discussion regarding a definition for temporary residence. How is it defined? Travis commented on the various issues faced by the county with temporary structures. Of course, if I would look at the second page at the top, it says upon motion by Mark, section by Kevin, the commission unanimously approved 518.6 temporary structures. That answer your question, Maybrook?
Uh, I don't have a question.
Okay.
I was saying, in the document.
Oh, you did.
I think you made a note in the document here that motion to approve section 18 passed on 313, 2023.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha.
You make a notification.
It says something about change the numbering in R107.1 to letters.
I think we made a, I don't fully remember back from March, so I don't want to get this, but don't need to change it so it matches our, um, flow or something or format. I think that's what we said.
I just wanted to make sure that it was voted on.
Is it included in our minutes, probably?
No, it's already in the minutes. Okay. We don't have anything else on the agenda, but we can certainly, um, go back and refresh our memories and make sure that.
Can I interrupt?
We go, go ahead.
I passed out, um, just as an update to everyone. I had two handouts. One was the, the, kind of the subdivision control ordinance thing.
Yeah.
We're gonna, I'll load it up with John and then we'll bring that up later. Then I also passed out this little bitty stapled packet. This is from the Harrison County document. These are the pieces that we passed to add to our subdivision control ordinance. This is what I edited in a meeting that we approved, changed all the stuff. So at some point, like Max has said, when this all gets passed in the hole, this will get added in. It's when everyone will have a copy of what it looked like and what we already approved. So if you want everybody to recognize what they were needed for. This is not exactly the current document that we're using. This is just the one I have on hand. This is what's gonna get added to the real document eventually. So just so people have it together, this is how we have been working on our, um, two or three words probably. I just wanted you to see that we have done some stuff.
So we struck out several things in the Harrison County document and this has been fully edited.
I can.
And it's ready to.
Well, I would say ready because now we have to meet with John. There's some other stuff in here, so eventually it'll be.
So when John fixes, would he, would he kind of clean it up a little bit?
Well, I hope, that's, I hope I guess. That's what John just, you know, what I, we had made changes to. Now you know that I just wanted to say that before I forgot.
How do I say that in a set of minutes, what you provided us?
Just say I provided documents showing past progress from the Harrison County subdivision document that will be added to our current Washington County subdivision document, maybe? I know that sounds regressive, but.
What about rough, rough draft?
Rough draft. Just so you guys can look it over, see if that's what you thought we did, this is what, based off of the notes that I took, this is what we, what I did based off of, so. There's also my personal documents. That's why it's in my handwriting. It's not okay. Too volatile. I bet you're seeing it.
No.
I was just going back and forth.
But I will do that. Are you looking at this stuff? On the enforcement of five point oh one.
Or it talks about Kami. You're, I guess you were trying to determine who, who's responsible, who's the responsible Kami? While you're there.
Uh, yeah.
To a criminal performance violation, which is for, for completion.
Gotcha.
Not mine, right? That's all?
Is there anything that any of you want to bring up? On anything? Anything else?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring up this at the meeting.
Okay.
Well, at first Monday's a holiday, so we won't meet halfway through September. The last time we did that, probably by those things, nobody went to meet halfway through November.
Correct, yes.
But y'all know what's coming up in September again. What do you want me to look? If y'all want, meet October.
I thought we had agreed more than the year before the president, but it didn't meet on the first Monday. Monday on any...
That's what I brought to you when I was thinking about it, but I wasn't quite sure. I just thought I'd bring it back up. John's not here to verify, but I'm pretty sure that's not what we talked about.
Hopefully John will be back, back feeling better after his last treatment here in a few weeks.
First of all, y'all know, I don't know if you guys want to go ahead and say we're not by that one? It's, I don't know if I can, but I'm not gonna...
You want to put that in the form of a motion that we postponed till October?
Well, that's a holiday. It says we're set to meet on the fifth, which is a Tuesday, because I followed the council schedule. But then I thought we also, we didn't want to be on Tuesdays, so again, what I want to do is we're going to be on the first Tuesday next month. Or it would be on the eleventh Tuesday.
You're going to be out. We know that for sure, right?
I'll definitely be out here in the beginning of this. The end of September, fourteenth and fifteenth, maybe the beginning of that next week. Don't know. I don't know. I don't know how many months I'm up after that, so...
What's penciled in there for the fifth of September?
Council meeting and planning commission at six thirty, which is a Tuesday, not a Monday. Well, I was on the same page as Andrew, but I got to thinking that I thought we couldn't meet the first Monday. But it's approved for the first Tuesday. Does one of John have it?
You want to do people?
Just want you to know, it's coming up. I look at it at that time, because my September is busy, so...
I could very well not be available too, because a lot of times if I have a three-day weekend, sometimes I'll try to mash in another day or so randomly. The Tuesday would be the day that I would incorporate in that.
Okay.
I already have another meeting scheduled then, so, but I can, what do you think?
All right, so, let me...
I would rather do all of them, so... But are you saying that's an option or just to do like a September meeting altogether?
Yeah. That's fine. Okay. Then we can go back and we'll just first Monday in October.
With which? The second. October second will be our next meeting after today.
Okay.
Is that okay? I'm going to move that we cancel our September meeting. Because we, Tuesday is hard for people to put halfway through the month without you out, which would then put our next planning commission meeting October sixth, six thirty.
For second second then. All those papers say aye. All right. Motion passed. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, I do have some, I do have a question.
Okay.
Now we're talking about the October second meeting. Aside from me, looking at our agenda, agenda today, aside from anything that would come up before that, where, what do we need to put on the agenda to discuss, uh, so we're moving forward with our drafts that we've worked on in October?
Hopefully we can, for sure, put on the agenda, hopefully if it works out that I talked to John. When we heard from John about the subdivision stuff, so...
Exempt subdivisions is one.
So maybe then we could get...
Some clarification on, on that.
So maybe as a, a rough draft, put together what we want to be our new subdivision control ordinance. Hopefully get that done.
I guess...
Have a conversation about it.
Another, what I'm getting is, um, I just pulled up the section five eighteen. Uh, we approved and stopped, uh, working through that on three thirteen. I don't know if manual progress on that...
We have, we went straight to this step, the subdivision step.
Okay.
So we haven't worked any further than that, I don't believe.
Is there something, is there more to this document that we need to be working through, or are we going to be looking at?
I assume we need to finish chapter five. I don't know what was left in it. I haven't really looked at it since.
That's, that's the last, yeah. I think five eighteen is the last thing.
Okay. So what, what comes after chapter five? Is it just, uh, the map?
The map, I believe. Trainship, amusement, enterprises, including concerts, rodeos, and racetracks.
And so there's, that is being discussed. What, what section is that about?
About twenty. Actually, five nineteen is tourist, home, or cabin.
And, and I see in this document where five nineteen has had its comments on it from the twenty twenty, it's like, looks to me like it's been like, it's been, uh, so...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have an explanation as to why we jumped around. I think it's because some of these things were also related to other things that we were addressing prior to that, so we jumped over and addressed, tried to get them all, because they were kind of interrelated. Same way with this, uh, wind, wind energy conversion system. I know for fact, if you look back, we talked about windmills and we basically said that whatever the state, we weren't adopting any regulations on windmills. Whatever the state, uh, rules were, that's what we were going to. And there's a whole bunch of stuff here on windmills. And I don't really think we had any windmills, yeah. So to answer your question, Andrew, there was the trainship, amusement, enterprises, including concerts, rodeos, and racetracks. And honestly, we already have a lot of, uh, some of these, some of these things in this document, like the first sentence, "As parking is prohibited in the public driveway." We've already got rules for that. So a lot of this stuff is just, uh, things that we already have on the books. Okay. Back to the subject, Andrew. Okay, we're going to talk next October, being exempt subdivisions. We got that resolved. And then the temporary structures. Which was already, already passed, but there were some things that you wanted to bring up about that?
I don't have any more questions. I'm very certain.
Okay.
So that kind of... And I think the recertification fell in section eighteen, correct? Yeah. So we've, uh...
I guess we're for sure to finish chapter five, how many sections that is, right? So then in the first meeting?
Yeah.
Five, at least five eighteen, if there's a five nineteen or the five twenty.
So there is, that's what we're, there is a five nineteen. It looks like it's had edits on it.
We just want...
From back from twenty twenty.
So we could either leave it the way it is, or we're new commissioner, we could leave it. I don't trust that, but we still want to do it. We've done that on most of it, so... Okay, leave it though. The way it is, is we'll just do five eighteen, leave five nineteen, or is there a five twenty?
There you go. There's a five twenty.
Is there notes on that? As five nineteen that are approved, I guess. Is there a note on that?
Uh, it doesn't say that.
Okay.
Um, on this...
Yeah.
Uh...
We don't believe it has either.
Okay, there we go. So...
So it's approved, five eighteen, five nineteen?
Five nineteen to approve on the agenda. Uh, in short, let's do five twenty on the agenda to approve. And then five twenty-one is the wind energy conversion system. So it is like a, and, um, I guess it's a part of it.
Yeah. That is at least, uh, perfect. Rock over. Is that a good name?
Okay. Anything else? Moving to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second?
My second.
All those papers say aye. All right.
Two heads, a May, June, May.